Buy you to the property. So, um, but I don't know, I'm not in a, I'm not an assessor. I don't appraise property, so I, I can't tell you.
Well, thank you for that information.
Could you just state your address?
I'm sorry, Daniel Hess. Twenty fifty-five. West Green Tree Road. Five three two oh nine, that's on the other side of the river.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your answers.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing? Don't see anybody else here in the chambers. If there's anybody joining us on the Zoom that would like to speak in the public hearing, you can unmute and state your name and address. All right, second call for the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four annual program budget. Third and final call for testimony on the twenty twenty-four budget.
Hey, Robert Cromwell, seventy-five thirty North Applewood Lane. Yeah, I did have a question about the, um, library portion of the budget. Is that combined their operating budget and their capital, um, projects budget? Or is that just the operating budget?
A four hundred and some thousand dollar figure, almost five hundred thousand dollars? Uh, that's just their operating costs. It costs us just a little under a million dollars a year to run the North Shore Library. And Glendale pays approximately fifty percent, a little bit over fifty point something percent of the budget based on the population distribution among the four communities.
So they didn't ask for any capital improvement budget this year?
No, they didn't. The money for the new, uh, library is being raised entirely by, uh, private sources.
Well, I thought they were planning on moving in in the next budget year anyway, so.
They're, they're planning to move in by twenty twenty-five. Yeah, okay. Any other questions, Mr. Cromwell?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you. And one last call, any final testimony in the twenty twenty-four, on the twenty twenty-four annual program budget? All right, I'd entertain a motion from a member of the council to close the public hearing. Moved by Alderman Galhard, is there a second? Second, Alderman Doherty. Um, all those in favor of closing the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four program budget, please say aye. Close no. Motion carries, the public hearing is closed. Okay, we have before us a resolution that adopts the twenty twenty-four city budget and establishes the twenty twenty-three city tax levy. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution, please?
Oh, moved.
Moved by Alderman Bailey, is there a second? Second, Alderman Schmelzling, any discussion from members of the council? Yep, Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
I'd just like to do a shout out to staff. I know there's been a lot of changes in the budget over the last year with, uh, financials being completing their audits and everything else, and also just the simple things. I know we all probably had lots of Q and A on the side, but just really great work to our, our staff who's done that. Also, uh, I went above and beyond, I saw when I asked about how do we compare to some of our neighboring municipalities in the final budget? So, um, really illuminating to see where our, our taxes go compared to the others. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from members of the council? All right, all those in favor of approving the resolution that adopts the twenty twenty-four budget and establishes the twenty twenty-three tax levy, please say aye. Close no. Motion carries, the resolution is adopted. All right, the next item is the consent agenda, which would be the minutes from our last meeting and approval of accounts payable. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Moved by Doherty, seconded by Galhard, um, any discussion? It will, uh, will consider the consent agenda approved, uh, without any objection. Hearing no objections will move on. The old business is review and possible action on authorization to bid capital improvement projects funded by the ARPA, and I will turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Um, so in front of the common council and, um, also in the agenda packet is a memo highlighting some options based on previous discussions for the use of, uh, the over one point three million dollars in ARPA funds. Uh, the majority of the recommendations here in the memo are related to bike and pedestrian improvements. Um, staff put together after a careful review of the priorities of the bike and pedestrian plan and our thoughts and abilities to try to spread some or most of the costs out as much as possible throughout the different um, areas of the city. Uh, came back with a recommended base bid total of about one point six million, so a little higher than three hundred thousand dollars in, in the funds that were received for the ARPA funds. Uh, listed those, those costs and the projects on that list, including the type of project and any notes on um, specifically where it would go. Uh, the goal with this review of the bike and pedestrian plan was to try to as much as possible capture and fill in the gaps and connectivity in the, um, current bike and pedestrian system. Um, thinking carefully about where there are gaps and to try to fill them with the, um, the current system, what, what we felt was important. And we feel that, um, these recommended plans and, and projects will fill a lot of the gaps that exist today. Uh, there will be a, a project that will happen in the next couple of years that will fill even more gaps, which is the Silver Spring Project, which will add significant uh, bike and pedestrian improvements in the area. Where those are, how those are, we don't know quite yet as we start with the design of it. Uh, we also listed, um, on here, um, some alternatives that, that could be included. Those are three projects. One on Lydell, south of Silver Spring, and then two on Green Tree, to basically take it from Crestwood all the way to the, um, Oak Leaf Trail. Those total about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we were also asked about a possible park in Clutch Park, which would create sort of a boardwalk area and other improvements. Um, the cost of that is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. In order to accomplish that, you'd have to remove, um, some of the bike and pedestrian improvements on there. We've also included in there the, the, the plan, the, the gap analysis, which is a link. Uh, this was done by Clark Dietz. Um, and we sort of did a rudimentary, um, um, filling of this. The, the green areas are the proposed improvements, um, in the gap analysis. The red are future and plan, but those are basically the improvements on Green Bay Road, north of Good Hope and south of Good Hope. And then the, that connectivity on, um, Gene Nicolaid Rival basically take the sidewalk from, um, Green Tree all the way down to Bend when it's completed. So looking for, uh, the council's feedback on, on where to take this next.
Thank you, Mr. Warwick. I will open it up now to discussion from members of the council. No discussion, everyone's, no, I'm, I've got a discussion, but go ahead and Jim. Alderman Doherty, go ahead.
I think the idea of trying to put this in something that appeals to the entire city and give us a jump on some things we promised to kind of work on in twenty thirty plan is positive. And, uh, I think we keep trying to say we want bike and pedestrian access and make that easy across the city, and we've kind of twenty thirty is not as far away as we'd like it to be. So I think it's positive. We're trying to move that together. I think there's some opportunity, hopefully, that maybe on some of these items that are on county land or something, maybe it's maybe difficult, and I've talked to, uh, Carl about this, it's certainly not easy to have the county involved. But I think it may be worthwhile to try to get them involved if we're going to do something as opposed to us calling them and saying, hey, you should do this. We, us saying, we're gonna, you know, we want to do this and we're willing to be part of it could be a good opportunity for us. Every now and then they surprise us, so.
Thank you. Alderman Galhard?
Uh, well, I mean, I, I had, uh, suggested some type of like a river walk or something along those lines, um, which I still think is a, is a great idea, but I, I also recognize that uh, that idea kind of comes, you know, a few years after this, uh, connecting Glendale, uh, twenty twenty bicycle and pedestrian plan. So I kind of feel like, uh, you know, that should take precedent, uh, since that was something that's been around for three years. It hasn't been completed, so that's kind of my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Alderman Bailey?
Um, my only kind of feedback is, I think we, we did an extensive project in twenty twenty about the bike plan. We heard from the voter, from the constituent to that point in time that that was very important to them. I think this addresses a lot of those concerns. Um, so I, 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 I in concept feels good for me. My only call out or question is on the parkway, when we're talking, um, asphalt in the middle, we're not disrupting any trees. That was a big concern back then.
Yeah, there may have to be a few of those brush trees that come out. I mean, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that will hopefully be the majority of the issue, but we'll move and meander the bike path through to avoid as many trees as possible.
I'll be probably the most verbose, so apologies in advance. Um, I, I think it's, it's great that we are looking at the bike and pedestrian plan. I, I agree with all of my colleagues here that I think that's something we never really followed through on. So I, I think, um, when I look at the, the ones listed, I do struggle some that about a million dollars is for two multi-use trails when, um, those are on county land, I think. Um, Alderman Doherty kind of highlighted that as well. It'd be nice to see if there's something we could do to partner with them because they did get a four million dollar grant for connecting the Oak Leaf Trail, revitalizing it, improving it. So, but I understand also that this has to be things that are ARPA funded and has to go through that funding mechanism and the audits and everything else. So, um, so I guess from my, way I'm kind of thinking about this is, you know, bike, multi-use trail type things, pedestrian things, and then I still think we have a unique opportunity to do something unique and new at that location along the river. So we really have that amenity. We should take advantage of it. And I, I, that's the first time I heard about like a river walk, but there is that potential to have like a boat kayak takeout to align to what we have up the river in Brown Deer. So I'm thinking we could potentially try to divide things up and see what we could do and get some of these bid out. I would be very reluctant to throw, you know, half a million dollars on a, a trail that goes down the middle of Milwaukee River Parkway when it's actually wide enough to put a bike lane on both sides and potentially have that as a a lower cost immediate way to address the, the bike and pedestrian plan. Doesn't mean we can't do something like that later. Um, also, I'm a little surprised that some of these things are listed that already have sidewalks on the other side of the road. I think it's, if you can walk across the street and, and walk on Whitefish Bay, you know, we're out of the North Shore, you're welcome to do so. And that means we, we could probably get away with doing some of these on Lydell. And, um, but I do feel if we prioritize, the, the ones that I see most important would be probably doing, um, of course, the one in, um, Green Tree, because it's the probably most walked road that gets the most traffic where people are walking at night. Doesn't matter the weather, they'll be walking, um, and, uh, followed by probably, I'd say the connection up on, um, Port Washington Road, up by Sugar. Uh, what is it? Sugar Lane? Sugar Lane there. Uh, that's one of those where we are going to see a lot of improvement on Port Washington Road. That would really take it all the way up to Good Hope. Uh, potentially even further if you were to think about getting to the bus lane. So if I were to prioritize, I'd probably do, you know, Green Tree, that one. And then we should look at maybe doing something with the county. Maybe they would go in on us. If we do one, they do one. We start out with the one on Good Hope and then potentially see what it would cost to do, um, the one on, um, the parkway. As far as the the park, I, I think it's really unique that we have the river and I don't feel like we utilize it. We've already taken a big hit to what we had before on the river because of the dams removal, which lowered the water levels. Now, all we can really do in a lot of places is kayak and such. So really making that our thing might be beneficial. And if we were to just strip back that park to doing something smaller, like a pavilion, um, potentially if it's our land under lease, we could even rent it like we rent our other facilities at Maslow ski. Um, we could just do the, the boat launch, the pavilion, and maybe if you look at what we don't have is basketball. We have it just in the schools, but we have pickleball opportunities at all of our town courts. We can work with the school districts on that and the playground is just down the road. So if you really take all those things and just rebid them out, I think we might find we could do a little bit in each area and still do it within our own control, or potentially just make some partnerships with the county. Um, I can spell that out in a resolution, but that's, uh, that's kind of where my head's at.
Green districts have a lot going on and, and what's been outlined because of you, as you've all indicated at our town halls, Silver Spring is going to be of a larger impact. I'm, at this point in time, I'm okay with whatever the city administrator has decided to move forward with.
Thank you. Alderman Vukovich.
I'm still, um, I, I, I think I'm in agreement with, um, a couple of people. I, I'm not gonna fight this, this much, but again, um, looking at it, it is this is overall a pedestrian and sidewalk, so it's great for the city. Um, so I don't really have a big issue, but I really, if we're not gonna do this and we decide to do something else, then we need to go back to the table, because then it gets disproportionate again when it comes out to what districts are benefiting from this money. Cause, um, you know, not to point out anything, but if we switch this up, then, you know, the Lydell Target um, project is gone, the Lydell, um, Henry Clay is gone tomorrow. That's gone. And then exactly how is District One even reaping any benefits from this?
All right, thank you, Alderman Vukovich. Um, Alderman Doherty?
I think when Tamika talked last time, and, and I agreed a lot with is, I'm not worried so much about where these happen because we're trying to connect the city and trying to get things all the way around. If some community or some district has connections already, then I don't think they need as many or need more. So I'm kind of looking at this not as by district, more as completing a plan of what we were trying to do, saying just to me, the one point four million bucks was kind of like, wanted to make sure that helped all the city. So to me, connecting the city helps everybody, even if your front of your house, if you will, didn't get a connection, but you already had one. Well, then you had one. So I'd like to see us keep that in mind as we look at this. But I do like Steve's idea, trying to say, let's see if the fact we have some money, we can put something towards it, we could get the county. I know Carl, in your personal experience, that may be a miracle, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth the run.
Yeah, I think grants are another opportunity. Alderman Schmelzling and our email exchange today, uh, had mentioned grant opportunities. And there are definitely grant opportunities out there for these types of projects. Um, we might be running into some double dipping with some tap grants for these projects, because we will be applying for it for the Silver Spring Project as well, too. But that doesn't mean there aren't other.
We have luxury of some time. This isn't like we have to spend it by twelve thirty-one.
No, we have what, two more years, right?
Right.
Okay. The S B spent by January first of twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, same deadline virtually as the Silver Spring Project. So it's hard to peg what year for which projects and which grant, so that'll be, it'll be tough lining them up, but.
I wanted to offer two comments. In terms of like River Walk or Riverfront, um, the bike group that showed up here a while ago, I heard from one of them this past week that they've gotten permission from county parks to go in, and they're going to provide a lot of sweat equity in terms of they are going to go in and do improvements that can be done, you know, clearing some brush and flattening some areas out. So the group is actually going to go in and improve the bike trail that currently exists.
They were doing that this weekend.
Yeah, right. They got permission to do that and they were already working on it this weekend, right? And I think they've got a couple of weekends they're going to be working on it to get it done, but it'll be done by the end of the year. So that's one thing that does certainly improve the trail that's there. The other thing I wanted to remind people is that we got almost two million dollars in ARPA funds. We had several hundred thousand that went to police and, uh, some costs at City Hall that were related directly to um, late costs of the pandemics. It didn't come out of the CARES Act, it came out of our ARPA funds. Then we did as a council, um, pass an ordinance that said we will no longer allow lead pipe laterals to exist in the city. And then we said sixty-seven homes, we sent letters to all of them, they all got back to us, and we went out and replaced all of those lead laterals using ARPA funds. The overwhelming number of those homes were the older housing stock in Glendale, primarily in in, uh, the sixth district, south of Silver Spring, and in the first district in the Glendale Avenue areas where most of those homes were. So if you think about these projects, the bike and pedestrian, as well as the fact that we did all the water main replacements of the one point seven million or so total that has been spent, that would be spent, it is fairly evenly distributed just on a variety of different projects. So, um, and then, you know, I live in a neighborhood with sidewalks. If we were going to spend money to put more sidewalks, I wonder why we were spending money to put sidewalks. I already have them. You know, the same thing in, in a few of the other neighborhoods. So just wanted to keep that in perspective, that of the one point seven or so million that would be spent on non pandemic-related expenses, that they are pretty evenly distributed with this bike and pedestrian improvements, as well as the fact that we replaced. Uh, we don't have any lead laterals in the city of Glendale, and I think that is a huge step in the right direction for us as a community. Not a lot of other communities with older housing stock in the county can say that. Um, but we, we made a very good decision in, in saying that they had, they were illegal and then telling the homeowners, we'll use ARPA funds to pay to get rid of them. So. Yeah, so that's my comments. I actually support the, the initiative that was brought forward by the, the city administrator. So at this point, I'll open it up. Is there a member of the council that wants to make a motion? Okay, go ahead, Alderman Schmelzling.
So if, if I were to kind of choose the, the focus and the priority, I think we should, um, I have this written up as well, but we can always modify it here as we're talking. Um, do the, the bidding for the sidewalk extension from Green Tree Road to the Crestwood road, that's most important, of course, to my district and my constituents. Then we would also take that northbound to the road, not to the one that goes southbound, exactly to there's a northbound and a southbound, because that would then allow the northbound communities to also feed into, um, Green Tree. But that, I think frankly, is the, of all the missing sidewalk connectivity, I feel it's the most important in the city. If, even if I step back and think about the people who are walking there, um, Friday nights, Saturday mornings. Um, then I would say the, the one from Port to Sugar Lane, um, on Port to Sugar Lane, because that one also needs to connect up to Good Hope, and that could eventually go elsewhere. Um, and then I would hopefully be able to get Green Tree from Crestwood to Range Line, so that would be another one that we just, um, bid. And then I would say Civic Drive is another one that I, I don't see a lot of people using it, but it was on the list. And I think it also doesn't have sidewalk on the other side, and it may be a good connector across the, the city right through the, you know, the main heart of it. Um, so that's what I would suggest for the sidewalk, and I know then we have the trails. Um, it'd be really nice to get a bid for, and I guess this will be the second part, a bid for both of those, uh, the one on uh, Good Hope as well as the one on Milwaukee River Parkway, just to see what they would really cost.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask just for parliamentary reasons here, the motion itself, can you do like more succinctly say?
I would like those, I would like the motion to go out to bid for those four specific places of sidewalk.
Okay.
The two trails.
Okay.
And then also I would ask that we see if we could, uh, price out the smaller park that would just include, um, a boat launch, a, um, pavilion and a, um, I would suggest a basketball court if we were going to pick something, because that should potentially fit inside this. So we would then have bike and pedestrian, and we would have the, um, the park.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out, based on the estimated costs here, how are you dividing those up? I want to make sure I get the right ones here.
Right, so Green Tree Road to, and, and again, the, I would actually it actually costs, because I think when I did some math, it seemed a little interesting how much the, the one down.
So the green tree is a hundred forty thousand, then the next one, the next ones are which ones? Civic is one ninety, right?
Yep, Sugar Lane to Mall as well, or Sugar Lane to Good Hope, I'm sorry.
I asked for a clarification real quick. The Sugar Lane, I believe, goes down to Green Tree. On the other side of the road, it's a connection basically from the Hampton Inn all the way to Good Hope. So there's two port road ones, so I was confused on.
It's the northern one. It's the one from, um,
Good Hope or the?
There, there already is one from Hampton to Good Hope, yes, it's that one. That's the one. Yes.
Here, I'll pass this out. This is what I was suggesting. Alderman Vukovich, you have a point of order?
Yes, um, there's too much discussion in the, the motion. So if we can go back to discussion and get it correct or the way we want it, and then do the motion, because I'm completely confused on if I want to say yes or no on the motion. So can we?
I agree, yeah. Yeah, okay. He actually has a motion written up, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'll have to email it.
I'll, I'll just, I'll text her.
Point of order question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there anything wrong with finding out what these are in a formal bid process and then deciding whether or not we do them?
Right, kind of what I'm going for is what's, what's the bid on all of these? That's what I want to get is actually a price.
I don't want to have some not bid.
Okay, that's fair.
I, I guess I don't see a downside, is there?
Yeah, I guess I'd have to ask Attorney Bear whether or not a contract requires if we bid, you know, one point six million dollars worth of work, what are we allowed to reject from that bid?
Let, let the city attorney answer the first question. The question was asked that if we were to go out to bids on these and get bids in, do we have the ability to reject them and not move forward with the projects, or are we locked in because we went out to bid? So, city attorney? You, mic, microphone, please.
Oh, my opinion is if, if you send out an RFP and you're not happy with the responses that you've gotten and, um, the proposals, you don't, you're not, you're not legally obligated to, to accept one of them.
We accept like sixty percent of the bid, though, is that?
Well, they're gonna be.
Some minimum bid requirement. So we were to bid one point six million, and we only wanted to move forward with half of the sidewalks? Bidding, you're bidding them by project?
Are they going to be individ-
I, I was recommending we do the four sidewalk pieces together, and then we would do the trails individually, because we'd probably not do all of it.
You can also, but. Let them up as in the alternative, you know, there's a number of things you can do with the RFP. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I think it might make sense, because there's obviously going to be economies of scale. I mean, you don't want to send out, you know, eleven different, or ten or eleven different RFPs, right? I mean, so you might want to group these and then, and then do RFPs, you know, where it makes sense together.
The, the goal with this project, and I, I don't mean to curtail this, is that we were hoping to combine the bids with this, our road resurfacing project, our sidewalk replacing project, as well as the, um, traffic calming projects that were coming up to try to get a very large asphalt and concrete together to try to then further lower the price for everything.
But any of the places where there are things that are on street, that would be included as part of our, um, our asphalt project for the upcoming year? Any of the things that are sidewalks will be included with our sidewalk improvement. So these would be incorporated into other things, and how we paid for them would be either out of capital improvement or out of ARPA funds.
Correct, that is the goal to, then, you know, we, we had those really expensive bids for the traffic calming to include that in there, too, to substantially bring down the price.
Okay.
So this was my original thoughts. I think after speaking more with our city administrator, things like at Maslow ski park would just complicate matters. I wouldn't recommend anything that's listed on my sheet of paper for that. But otherwise, I think it really is just a matter of, you know, bidding out those sidewalks in priority order as listed. The, I'm doing this more for everyone's reference, um, the Walker River Parkway, um, as well as the Good Hope Trails, just to see what each one of those would cost. And then, um, we could also see how much it would have cost to just stripe those bike lanes on, um, Milwaukee River Parkway.
Okay, I, I am, at this point, you've said a whole lot of stuff, and you've also given us a paper motion that is quite lengthy and quite complicated. I'm, I'm going to call on, I'm going to go and call on, we're going to say at this point that that's not a motion, we're still in debate and discussion. I'm going to call on Alderman Vukovich next, and then Alderman Shaw. And we'll come back to figuring out how to put this into a motion, because this is.
Get alignments on it, it's more what it's for.
Alderman Vukovich, you're next, you have the floor.
Um, I, I thought that we were just, and, 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 please correct me, but I thought the way I read it is that we were going to get bids on what they're suggesting. I didn't see that we had to pick and choose like what was there, because one of the issues that I have, and I, I think even though someone commented that, and I don't know who it was, that especially on Lydell, there is not a lot of traffic going north on Lydell. But there's a whole crap load of it going south on Lydell, and especially when they don't have a sidewalk on some of that, that is very dangerous. So I just, I don't like the fact that we're picking and choosing that's why I, I really wish we could get bids or figure out how to get bids for everything, then look at the cost analysis of it, see what is economically okay for us to do, but not just pick and choose at this moment, because it, it, it just, uh, I think it's priorities. And obviously, um, each district is going to have their own priorities, but I find that area is unsafe sometimes to walk down.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Shaw's next, and I'll come back to Alderman Schmelzling.
I agree with Alderman Vukovic with respect that, um, why are we picking and choosing now? Allow the staff to do or prepare everything so we can get the bids, then pick and choose once we understand what the possible costs are going to be. So don't pick and choose now, let staff do their research on what's on here, what they've reck- So don't pick and choose now. Let staff do their research on what's on here, what they've recommended, and give them additional ideas if you want, but allow them to re refer this back to staff to allow them to go to bid to bring back a more definite amount of money that they're talking about.
Thank you, Alderman Schmelzling.
I read this as there would be two bids, the space bid, which means we wouldn't have money to do a park or anything else. And then an add-on that maybe we could come up with additional three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars again without the park. So if we're going to just do the two bids, you know, it's essentially a base with a single alternate. If we're going to try to get individual line items for all of these, then that begs the question earlier, like, is that going to impact the the cost by scale? I don't know if it would, but I would be happy to see if we could get an individual price on all of these. And then pick and choose in a priority basis, what we think makes the most sense. I would also be interested, as I noted on my sheet of paper, to have a more limited park that wouldn't be eight hundred thousand dollars. That could still accommodate a pavilion, kind of a place for the bikers to get together, maybe play some basketball and have a place to launch a boat.
Thank you. Mr. Warwick, yes?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. If I could just add one item of this, I I, you know, was part of the, you know, staff here, and we talked about developing that park. It's right by my house. I think it would be a great, you know, addition to the city. So I don't mean to say that that I don't think it's a great idea right now. You know, our recommendation from staff was to try to centralize the bids into one bid to make it easy for this federal money that we are receiving, and keep it all sort of on the same level to do something and to do it well. And the mayor and I and and Alderman Doherty have been working on a plan to present to the council an annual plan to invest more into the city on an annual basis to do improvements like this. And if I I know that there's a worry, maybe that these projects won't happen if we don't do them now. I I want to bring forth a plan to make sure that these do happen. And we talked about this, I think it was last week, as a plan to do that. It may not be as quick as this ARPA stuff, but we want to put it in a plan to make that park happen, make other park improvements happen, to put shade at Maslow ski. That's really the goal of of what we hope to do.
I've got a question for Mr. Imig. We have cost estimates on here for each of these projects. And I'm just curious, based on your experience this past year, when the engineers have given us cost estimates, how close have the RFPs come into those cost estimates?
Well, not that close. I mean, it's sometimes you get, it depends on how many you're bidding, and we bid some projects as you're late in the season, so to speak, so it was different. But I mean, what they're giving us, and then that's what we, as as Administrator Work mentioned previously, that was the task given to staff. So we wanted to bring something forth. You had a general idea of what typically something like this would cost, not that it's a pie in a sky thing, but yeah, I mean, it's it's an estimate. That's all it is.
Mr. Fellows did a great job. He put these estimates together based on the per square foot cost. We put the crosswalks in here, you know, the stamped stuff at all of the curbs, wherever there's a crosswalk. So they do include everything. It's not just per linear foot. When we talk about the Milwaukee Parkway project, there's how many crosswalks in there, like six? Eight, maybe, and they're like twelve thousand apiece?
That helps answer my question. Thank you, because I was wondering why the Milwaukee River Parkway was three hundred and twenty dollars.
That that really includes putting a sidewalk on both sides of it. Once you get south of, what is that street? Is that lane?
Kendall.
Kendall, yeah, you put sidewalks on five, five-foot sidewalks on both sides till you get to Silver Spring, because it sort of comes to a point.
That was like sixty-seven bucks, this linear foot for Crestwood to Range Line was a deal, then I was like, woo-hoo.
The reason I asked the question is because we're looking, we already have cost estimates provided to us. And if we're now going to ask staff to go out and get RFPs on these, I mean, if it comes back, this one point six million in total projects ends up being two and a half million. You know, that would be one concern. If it comes back and it's one point two million, well, that would be fantastic. It would fit within the ARPA funds, and we'd still have some extra money. So I was just curious as to how close their estimates have been this year.
Right, and it's, I mean, some of it's been used previously for the pavement markings. We paid this year, so we had that cost, actually actual cost. And and right, and and I was mentioned, I mentioned before, I mean, a lot of these are alternates. I mean, it, we delivered the traffic calming. I mean, if it came back too big, we maybe took something out or whatever, we didn't do it. So there is that option to do that with alternates. Because the problem is, I mean, you're going to have to bid it all, you know, to get an actual price from the contractors, what the contractor, which ones are going to bid on it, which ones are really due to the work. So again, it's all speculative until we actually get those bids back.
Alderman Doherty, go ahead.
I have some experience in auditing street and road contractors and stuff years ago. And some of this I don't see as some big gain in the sense, these are projects that are still going to be projects. They're going to have to move equipment. They're got, so I don't see a huge gain by lumping. There's an ease to get them, so we understand how to apply, you know, prove we spent it correctly and all that. But as far as the actual projects, these are projects.
Correct.
If we were doing a street, and the option is there for all the neighbors to add, get the apron done, they pay for the apron. There's an already an economy of scale, because already redoing the whole street, and then the apron of their driveway gets done, they pay for that.
I mean, they got to pick up all their gear and go to another.
Right, exactly. So if we're doing sidewalks and bike and pedestrian stuff all over the city, the economy of scale is kind of lost there. Yeah.
Consideration, too, is 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 not just a sidewalk, you know, you have the the prep of it. You've got in some of these areas, there's grade changes. There is a little bit more work involved than just a flat, you know, flat area, putting a flat surface on the sidewalk.
Okay.
So there is some of that taken into consideration.
All right, so we have right now a recommended base bid of one point six million to cover quite a few bike and pedestrian related gaps that exist based on the plan we did in twenty twenty. We have an alternative bid. We have other options for a riverfront park improvements, and then some even of some other considerations like shading thing, some some money spent on shade stuff at Maslow ski park. So I guess I would like to ask for a motion to direct staff on at least one of these, or maybe two of these. So we have a base project that really should all be together, not pick and choosing, and then an alternative bid, if we want to include that. But Clutch Park, the improvements. So I'm going to open the floor now to a motion that directs staff on one of the options they've sent to us, because they've already combined them to be like projects with like projects, which means they go out for a bid. They get a number of bids, and they all involve paving and striping, or they all involve sidewalks or whatnot. So, yep, go ahead, Alderman Schmelzling.
All right, if we're going to, are we all in agreement, then essentially, that we're not looking at doing the park for now? Because I think that was what this would come down to. So it seems like that's the direction we're heading. Okay, it's, just make sure we're all aware of that.
Not that it wouldn't be important sometime. I just don't think we can do it all.
So then, fair enough. All right, so let's move past that, then, because that kind of clears some things in my mind. Then I would I would like to move something from the alternative bid into the recommended, and we can discuss that next. I I feel like Green Tree to Crestwood, I'm sorry, Crestwood to Range Line, having no sidewalk right now, a large community that walks along there all hours of the day, no matter the weather, would take, in my opinion, priority over places that already have sidewalk. So I would want to move the that one in particular, not all of Green Tree, but just that section above quote-unquote the line to the recommended base bid, and see what falls out.
Okay, so are you moving the recommended base bid, the one point six million in projects, and then adding to it the Green Tree Crestwood to Range Line?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
And we'll see what it comes out at.
So is there a second then to the motion for the base bid, plus the addition of one of the items from the alternative bid? There's an emotion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second about a Miguel Hard. Okay, we're now in a in a period of discussion. The motion is the recommended base bid, all of the projects totaling one point six oh five million, and the inclusion of the additional Green Tree from Crestwood to Range Line, a total of approximately one hundred thousand dollars. That is the motion, and it's been properly seconded. We're now in a period of discussion. Yep, go ahead, Alderman Gahard.
And so just following up on on Alderman Schmelzling's idea, when when he says that the the very most expensive item in the recommended base bid is the Milwaukee River Parkway, and that we might be able to cut that back by just making a bike lane. That might free up some money to add this additional Crestwood to Range Line section. That's, I guess that's, that was what I was thinking in in seconding that motion.
The other thing is, staff have already indicated a desire to reach out to Milwaukee County to see if the park system is willing to help pay for a portion of that project. So that might also bring down some of the costs, considering we have to get permission from them to touch the parkway anyway. It's their land, so.
We'll review grant opportunities. I'm sorry, we will review grant opportunities if this motion is moved forward, too.
Okay, any further discussion on the recommendation for the base bid plus the additional other other item? Alderman Doherty?
Not to try to complicate this, I'm just talking. The part about the striping that that was brought up by Alderman Schmelzling makes sense to have just a price on that, too, right? Just to know the striping that was River Parkway from Sunny Point, Silver Spring, you know, just so we'd know that, too. If we're getting bids on stuff, why not know that?
Okay.
So I'd move to have that added, but.
Well, we know we could have a conversation with county, and they'll say, no, we won't put any money, but we'll do the striping.
That's what I'm saying. You never know.
Then we don't spend any money on anything, and they just do striping. There's all, we don't know what all the opportunities are, yeah, okay. Any other comments, discussion?
I was looking at everybody's seat. I was, didn't want to make this whole thing blow up over that, but.
It's still a part of it. It's just how it gets.
I'd be willing to add that to the motion if anybody else was interested. I just thought we ought to know that price.
Yeah, I mean, that's all, it's part of the recommendation from staff. It could be one of the alternatives, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, the one thing I just want to say is Alderman and Doherty and I met with staff this week to discuss, we have an opportunity with this ARPA, with this ARPA money to add a number of improvements. So it seems like every year we do a capital improvement budget, and it's replacing water lines, replacing sewer lines, regrading roads, repaving roads. It's the same, we're just taking the current infrastructure and improving it. But we have not been investing, with the exception of the building of Maslow ski park. We have not been regularly investing in new improvements, new amenities for the community. And so what Jim and I met with Carl to discuss was can staff prepare for us an ongoing project of improvements of new things? So that we're not just voting every year to, yep, we're going to repave these six streets, and five of them need the water and sewer lines replaced, and we're going to do some sidewalks. But we want to add, say, one year, maybe do get to these amenities in the park, and that becomes one of the improvements we add that year, or improvements at Maslow ski park. So there was a desire that we have new things that we're doing for the community and figuring out a way to include those in the budget and begin paying to add new stuff instead of just fixing the current stuff we have. And so that will be a part of a future discussion. So as we've discussed a lot of these things today, I wanted everybody here to just understand that there is a project in the works here to bring back a long-term plan of things we might be doing over the next five to seven years that add new improvements that we don't currently have. So, so I I support this motion. I think this is great to go out and and get the funding on this. But know that some of the things that are discussed here, that right now we're saying we're not going to be pursuing, we might very well be pursuing in this longer-term plan of new improvements we add to the community. All right, any further discussion from members of the council? Okay, so the motion is the recommended base bid that was in the memo from staff, as well as adding to it Green Tree from Crestwood to Range Line. That's our motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it. Okay, we are now moving into new business. The first item is the appointment to a vacancy on the Glendale Police Commission. We had a member of the police commission recently resigned because she was leaving the city. So have a vacancy. Nicole Ford actually had reached out to me when we had a vacancy a couple of years ago and was interested. She was for nine years a state parole officer, worked at the Department of Corrections when it was here in Glendale, down on Olive. She is now, for the last seven years, been a federal parole officer, has significant experience working with police. She has a good relationship with a number of our police here. Chief, do you know Nicole? Okay, I will make sure to connect you so that you have a chance to sit down with her. But extensive experience as working with police departments, and we had a really good conversation. I think she'll be a really good addition to the police commission. So I'm asking for a motion to appoint her to the vacancy of by, that was caused by the resignation of Nancy Arbour.
So moved.
Thank you. Move by Alderman Gahard, seconded by Alderman Shaw. By the way, Alderman Shaw, she is a Crestwood resident. Member of your district, yeah. All right, any discussion? All those in favor approving the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the twenty twenty-three winter newsletter and directing staff to print it and mail it. Mr. Warwick?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Before you, is the winter newsletter for consideration. Alderman Schmelzling noticed a sort of spacing error in the calendar, so we will fix that before it goes out. Just looking for any other feedback on it.
I already sent you my feedback of all the corrections to Chief.
Yes, thank you very much for doing that.
Alderman Gahard, did you have?
I did. So just, I don't know if there's a page number here or not, but where it just says twenty twenty-three City of Glendale, refuse and recycle collection calendar. I think we want twenty twenty-four, no way.
Joanne caught it already. Any other discussion?
Looks great. I I really like it.
All right.
Couldn't really go to the clip part.
I'm just surprised you guys didn't catch one piece that nothing said here.
Which one was that? Can you speak into the microphone, please?
All right, on the page numbers. Because it's like, to me, it's obvious, page three. And that was before I actually read it. That was just a skim.
Okay, yep, winter twenty twenty. Got it. All right, so these are, these typos, Joanne's caught them already. She's the managing editor, apparently, for the city newsletter.
I was assigned by the former city administrator.
Goodness, okay.
I still think it looks great.
Can we get a motion then with these corrections? Can we get a motion then to direct staff to print and mail the winter newsletter? Move Alderman Schmelzling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, next item is consideration of a recommendation from the Planning and Architecture Review Commission in consideration of scheduling a public hearing for a planned development at forty-one sixty North Port Washington Road. The Planning and Architecture Review Commission met, we already had a public hearing. And nobody came to speak about it. This is the property, the very large complex of multiple buildings that were joined together as one building owned by Brian Monroe on between Olive and Capitol. Department of Corrections, how, used to have a big chunk of that space. One of his recommendations for the use of this space, though, is not permissible in the current usage, so we need to move, if we're going to move forward with it, then it would require us to amend the agreement for the property. And that is that the Milwaukee Police Department has requested the use of that forty-some thousand square feet to be the the police hub, communications hub during the RNC. So the place where, one, there's ample parking, we're going to have police coming from all over the state, all over the region, helping with that. And so that would be the communication hub used during the RNC. And under the current guidelines, that is not a permissible use. He then has a number of other permissible uses that would all be discussed at the public hearing time. So can we get a motion to direct staff to schedule the public hearing for the next available opportunity? Move Alderman Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gahard. Any discussion? Alderman Doherty?
Do you've got any comment? Make sense, or? Yes, I I saw the original one, and it was more for their like, put all their command and control into one. So I I don't think we're going to have a thousand officers sit down there, but they'll have several hundred on duty during the whole DNC. So I I don't.
Probably a lot of computers and a lot of screens with a lot of monitors and cameras.
And a lot of squad cars down on the South End, so I have no problem with it, so, thank you.
I thought we're we're going to have the safest place in all, in the whole region during the RNC, so I'm very supportive of it, too. All right, can we get a motion then to direct staff? Or do we get the motion already? Thank you. The motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor directing staff to schedule the public hearing at the first available opportunity, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. I know in the staff memo, it said it probably wouldn't be until January, but we do meet December the eleventh, I believe. So if it's possible to get it, then. Okay. Oh, it's not the same. Planning and Architecture Review Commission is one public hearing notice, right? Is it? Okay, so it's going to take at least, okay. Well, it'll be the first available opportunity, which is most likely our January, first meeting in January. All right, the next item on our agenda is review and approval of updated snow and ice control policy.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'll basically turn this over to Mr. Imig. This is the new proposed snow ice control policy, last updated in nineteen eighty-nine. So a few have.
It was a good year.
Good year, yeah. Not sure a lot of what happened in nineteen eighty-nine, but good things did happen.
Charlie, I'm actually going to ask you a question kind of based on something Mr. Hess. Charlie, I'm actually going to ask you a question kind of based on something Mr. Hess asked in the public hearing on the budget. Last year was a light year. Do we end up with a whole lot of extra salt? Are we going to save some money on salt this year?
We are ordering less salt. So it, that's seventy-nine dollars a ton, I think this year. Yeah, actually last year went down. It was sixty-nine. That's the first time I've ever seen anything go down in price that we bought. So.
Okay.
I think they had excess, but, um, yeah, that's, that's the goal. I mean, and, and certainly, uh, you know, overtime as well. I mean, it's just. We have different obviously processes and means and methods since eighty-nine. Um, so a lot of it is brining. I brought that before in front of you all before, and obviously the equipment you've allowed us to purchase has certainly. Uh, impacted that as well. And, and quite frankly, I, I do like to remind everybody in typically I come in front of you all every year, just with an update of what we're doing. But this is actually to improve the policy and revise it. But, uh, um, I, I remind that we do not guarantee bare roads. I mean, that's not, we don't have a bare road policy. We do our best to keep them passable and usable and safe, but, uh, it is not a bare road policy. So that is identified in here as well. I'm just going to. Kind of touch on some of the updates.
Do we have any neighboring communities that have a bare road policy? Is it even possible to do some of the storms we get?
If you see Milwaukee, you know, river, uh, Good Hope and, and Mill Road are, 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 are wet. I mean, they use so much salt, the county does. So we, we don't want to do that because it will be regulated in our D and R permit eventually. And we want to get to that point where it isn't. I think you may have seen the other night on, on the news that the city of Milwaukee is doing the same thing where they're finally embracing, uh, uh, more brine usage as well. But, uh, um, they don't. I mean, it, it just, it's kind of unfortunate because it, and I do have outlined that in here, what jurisdictions. Um, maintain the roads in Glendale because the assumption is that's all the city of Glendale, but it isn't. It's the Milwaukee County Parks, Milwaukee County themselves that do. As well. And then part of it actually is, uh, the state, but Milwaukee County does the maintenance for them. In fact, this morning when I drove in at Tetonian Green Bay at the roundabout, there was actually a Milwaukee County plow truck just sitting there waiting. And they do that. And we've gotten called out another a couple of times in the winter. We don't have green trucks. That's not us sitting in our trucks waiting for. Snow to happen in the day when it's not even in the forecast, but, uh, um, it is something to, that, that people should be aware that, that, that is not our policy to do that. Um, so again, it, it, it identifies the areas and some updates. I mean, obviously the Alderman Gellhart's district, we've had our new cul-de-sac roads. And, and things like that. So, um, that stuff is identified as well, as well as the, uh, uh, the sidewalks that we maintain. And I do have to admit, Alderman Schmelsing did, did point out that I did not put, uh, the sidewalk abutting the. Uh, Maslow ski park on Bender Road. So that probably should be, I will include that in there, but that's really the only thing I think that was not included. Um, all the bus stops we have in there as well that we maintain. Um. And then I guess obviously with the employees, kind of just with our personnel who we have and equipment updates like that. Uh, again, identifying what brining, pre-wetting, anti-icing is that we now incorporate all those as part of our, our operations. And then obviously salting is, is restricted and we try to use as little as possible, but still keep the safety of the roads. Um, plowing policies again are updated and then, uh, mailboxes, we do identify again that. We're not hitting the mailboxes. Usually it's the snow and the reason that they are falling is because the post has been in sad main, maintained condition previously. Uh, so that is there as well. Again, um. Pretty much identifying anything else. That's, that's all. And then hydrants, I think we put that into that was not previously that we don't go out and do it. We encourage. Um, your constituents to, uh, to do that. Fire department does as well. In fact, I think they have a sign they used to have out here at the fire department. I was gone with construction, but I think it said maintain your, your hydrants in the winter time. So that's a brief, but quick explanation of kind of the updates. That have been imposed or, uh, requested since nineteen eighty-nine.
Thank you. Open up now to questions from.
Thank you for responding to my questions in advance. Um, one thing more for the benefit of the whole council. How are complaints handled? Um, like if someone doesn't have something cleared up within the twenty-four hours, you know, do they get warnings? Do they get? You know, how, how's that kind of handled as a, as a policy?
As far as sidewalks? Um, just, just as a quick reference. So before December first, it is in our ordinance. We do send out letters to all of the. Glendale commercial properties to maintain their sidewalks. So they do get that heads up, kind of a pre-warning to that. Residents do not get that. It is in our ordinance twenty-four hours. So typically, um, it is, uh, it is complaint based. Again, we, we don't have, uh, the staff or personnel to go out and check all the sidewalks. I know we're out and about. Steve Sheldrup is the superintendent. Who also directs the snow and ice operations. So. Twenty-four hours, if it's not completely, Steve will go out, actually he'll knock on the door because we can't send a letter typically with property maintenance, a letter goes out. And then a contractor will go back if it's not, but. We can't wait that long. So Steve will make contact. If it's not done, then we hire a contractor to come and plow the, or remove the snow from the sidewalk. So actually we're really on that. I know Steve prides himself on, on taking care of that. And he does a really pretty good job of that. With the residents, making sure that they are, are maintained.
So if someone is like a repeat offender, do they get? Still the twenty-four hour, I will have the twenty-four hours, but they get like a warning again or?
It is within the ordinance. So I mean, we still have to wait for the twenty-four hours. Maybe they're not a repeat offender this year or they are. So. Um, they still get the same treatment in accordance with their ordinance.
Alderman Vukovich.
Last year Charlie and I had a, a, a heck of a time with one of the constituents, especially when our. Our people plow, like our city people plow and people assume that. They have just done their, their, you know, driveways in their, and they. Expect us to come back because we've plowed. To clear out their driveways. And I think somewhere we have to be clear that. We have to plow the streets. We can't plow their driveways. Um. I, I guess I'm just trying to make sure somehow. That is clear because that was, I think Charlie, how many times did I call you trying to get some help or, or something? And there's always, and there's always those circumstances where we have, I think it was last year, we had a elderly, elderly ninety-year-old. Man who was trying to do it and Charlie. You know, really, um, graciously helped, but that's not the responsibility of the city.
That is correct.
It's page eight. I think it's pretty clear. It says there's no plowing of city private driveways by city personnel. Talks about that city removed it and residents are advised not to clear their driveway openings until. Plowing is complete. So I, I, I think it's covered to me. I think page eight. Under.
And actually it's in our ordinance as well, Alderman Doherty. And it does say that, that we are not responsible for a snow removal on your driveway. And we do our best. I mean, it's not. We're not out there trying to plow everybody in or, or out or whatever, or wait till your driveway is done and we're coming around the corner with a load of snow. But, uh, what we do in heavy snowstorms is usually we'll go down just one path down the center for emergency vehicles, keeping the road open. And then we'll come back and finish it. But yeah, I mean, it's, we, we, we're not timed. I mean, it's just when we get back to it, we get back to it. And unfortunately, yes, I think is. As Alderman Vukovic says, that, that some of the residents believe that we're done for the evening or for the end of the storm. And we are still coming back to do the final cleanup close to the curb. So I mean, I guess, oh, go ahead.
It was just more so, I, I know it's in the ordinance, but I'm saying even just verbally saying this out loud. Um. For people to hear so we can reference it like that. We, we know it's there. It's just something, cause it's been there for a long time.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. We'll definitely create an ad. So we put it out on our social media and our website to make it more clear. I think that's a great point.
And we do that with leaf collection. We do put out in the ordinance saying where to put the piles to avoid signs, things where we can do that. And I know certainly with Alderman Shaw, we work in Crestwood, which is a, it's a, that's probably one of our tougher routes. I'll give Dennis Fisher kudos on that one. Uh, with, with garbage carts and things like that, that'll be put in the road and, and, you know, try to avoid their, getting their driveway plowed shut or whatever, or vehicles parked. And, um, certainly the police department helps us up with that because there is no overnight parking, especially during. Snow emergencies, which I think we've only done probably two or three since I've been here, I think, which is mayor authorized. Um. Knock on wood, I guess it's getting warmer. I don't know, but, um, but yeah, that is a good point. And I know that's certainly helpful with your constituents, you know, if you're asked that question, you know, to help us. So we can maintain the roads and get them clear that much quicker.
Alderman Gellhart?
Hey, I'm just going to say if there's room in the winter newsletter to add that little portion, uh, you know, maybe we should get that out there to everybody.
Can do that. We just have to make sure Alderwoman Shaw has time to review that second.
That goes without saying.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a, a very like, I, I was reading this and I'm like, oh, that makes. I've been on green tree all these years and I'm like, oh, well, maybe I should wait until the plow comes by the second time and makes the full swipe before I clear out my driveway. So as long as it's within twenty-four hours.
I, I'm going to ask a question about, um, our ability to work with rental properties. Um, in the middle of my block, there is a house that is a rental. And the property owner sends a crew out that reg, that cleans that walkway. It is always the last walkway on the, on the block that is cleared. The rest of us have all done our walks. Rest of us have gone out, probably done our walks twice, you know, make sure they're completely clean. And they finally show up to do that when after it's frozen, after it's been walked on, after the dogs have come across it. I mean, and they never were able to get it fully clear. Um, and so, because it's not the renter's responsibility, it is the property owner's responsibility according to their lease agreement. Cause I've actually mentioned something to the renter before. Um, do we have a way of working with some of these, you know, rental properties to talk to the owners to say, hey? Just a reminder, the city of Glendale has an ordinance that requires you to clear your walks. And you need to get out there and do it when the rest of the neighbors are doing it, not three days after the storm.
I, I think it's mostly through enforcement. Unfortunately, as you know, I think a lot of these are absentee landlords and some of them are out of state, California, Florida. So I mean, trying to get a hold of them in time or even get a hold of them in general, even for other property maintenance throughout the year is quite problematic. I think what does send the message is if they're not doing it and we have a contractor go out and plow them, it is not cheap. Plus there is a forty, what is it? Forty percent? There's a lot tacked on to it that, to this bill. So I, if it's not lesson learned after that, I think it would be shortly. So usually compliance is pretty well, but I mean, if you know of these properties, certainly if you feel free to let me know or Steve Sheldrup and, you know, we can obviously keep an eye out. When he's patrolling around and make sure the roads are being cleared, he can take a look and, and do it that way. But I think firsthand knowledge with that. And once they get those invoices, it, it, it usually gets compliance pretty quickly.
Yeah, they, they usually get it by about the third day, but by that point, you know, that's about the time we'd be sending the crew out, right? Because they'd failed to do the job. Right. And they always seem to get it like right before they get in trouble. Right. They're always the last ones on the block.
Right.
And I'm sure, I mean, I know I've talked with folks around the neighborhood, there's several rentals where they're the last ones to get done. Because it's being done by the property owner and their crew gets there when they get there. They're probably dealing with sixty properties in Milwaukee and Glendale and everywhere. And they get there when they get there.
Right. And that's, and that's unfortunate with ours too. At least, you know, it takes two days probably to get the contractor out there because. You know, whoever we use as the contractor is usually tied up with other things they're maintaining. So, yeah, I mean, we do our best. And again, that's what we felt found is the best way is to do the door knock. And you know, if it is a, it is a tenant, let them know that. Your landlord is going to get this, this bill and it's going to be quite substantial.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah.
I was just going to add on to your comment. Um, believe me, I know the miracle of clearance is property because I have people who call me to let me know when he doesn't.
Yeah, the one time I was out of town for Christmas and the one thing I didn't think of was somebody to clear my walk. And I got home the day after a storm and Joanne had already gotten a call from somebody. So, yeah, yeah. All right. The one time. Thanks, Joanne. All right. So we do have a snow and ice control policy that's been presented by staff. Can I get a motion for a member of the council to approve the snow and ice?
Second.
Move by Shaw, seconded by Doherty. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving, aye? Those know. Motion carries. Thanks, Charlie. A lot of work went into this. Looks good.
A lot of work went into it and we'll, we'll see what the, the, uh, season brings, but yeah.
All right. Thank you. Next is the canine transition plan. I'm assuming this goes to the chief. All right.
All right. Uh, what I'm looking for is some approval to start our new, uh, search and, and purchase of our next canine. Uh, currently, uh, our canine is six years old. The average life is between working service life is between, uh, seven and nine. So our plan is to instead of wait. To see what happens. The dog could go longer. The dog could have hip problems. We don't know. It's to start planning it now. Uh, we have a transition plan, which would be, uh, the general plan is to purchase a new dog in twenty twenty-five. So what we would start now is purchasing a new squad car and getting it equipped. So it's available from whenever we would get the new dog. Uh, I don't even know if we'll get a squad car within a year, to be honest with you. There's, I'd probably a. Uh, a slight chance we would get it this year, but more than likely it won't come till twenty twenty-five. Um. We still would have our current canine bricks, uh, stay in duty until he's no longer able to. The benefit for that is while we would have two dogs for a while, uh, the new dog and handler would be able to train with, uh. Officer Beaker and Vic, Bricks. Um, I don't know if you're aware, but, uh, they're one of the best canines in the state and one of the best handlers. So I think that would be very invaluable for that. So that for a short time period, we might have two dogs for a little while. But then when Brick's retires, we're ready to go. With our next canine.
And are we staying with the Malamaz or are we going to?
More than likely.
They have a longer lifespan. The shepherds.
Yeah, shepherds have a little bit more hip problems. Not that I'm a big on a dog, but they've been very good. Um, where we go to trainings in Pennsylvania and they build, uh, specifically mostly with that dog. Uh, the good news is that, uh, the cost will, is all by fundraisers. We've had some very successful, uh, canine golf outings last couple of years. So we have all the money now to cover all the expenses for the next dog.
Think the community.
Add in.
Yes. Thanks to the brick as well.
The brick was a great job on promoting that for us. Yes.
Those are next are going to be bricks too, or little bricks.
I don't know. I, you know what? I remember had my hands in that. It was always named by the handler. So.
All right. Um, can we get a motion then to approve the canine transition plan as presented by the chief?
I moved.
Thank you. Move by Shaw, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Bailey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those know. Motion carries. Next item, flock safety camera subscription. Back to you again, chief.
We have, uh, three flock cameras in the city. Uh, we got those on a grant. They are leased. We had a two-year lease that lease expires in August of, of next year. They've been extremely, extremely, uh, successful for us. Um, right now, when we were looking at things, uh, we were approached by flock safety. When we had it was twenty-five hundred dollars a camera. So our annual subscription fee is seventy-five thousand dollars. We did budget for that in the twenty twenty-four when it comes up in August. Um, right now they're, uh, as of April first of this year, they raised their rates to three thousand dollars a camera. Um, but they offered us that if we were to sign a five-year lease. Um, that they would maintain that twenty-five hundred dollars per camera charge for, for the three cameras we have.
I believe if we add any new ones, it would go to the three thousand dollars. They would not negotiate keeping the twenty-five hundred if we added. You know, four or fifth camera.
And we'd have to add them before the end of the year and we haven't really thought about that. So.
Alderman Doherty?
Couple of questions. Know they've been successful, but I actually still worry about this technology in the sense of what happens to the data. What happened? They're always dumping it, but who's certifying that happens?
Well, it's, it, it's only stays on their server for so long. I have no idea who would go into their server and actually see if they.
Yeah, I think they ought to have it. There ought to be something that's a nationwide issue. And that is who's main, who's, who's watching over this? Because the ability for this data to be misused, misused is massive.
Yes, right now the cameras, uh, only capture the back plate. Um, they don't capture anyone that's, it's driving. So there's, there's nothing that way. Um, yes, you can, you can use it. Uh, one of the more valuable tools on it is for, uh. Uh, if you had a crime follow-up, uh, so you could, if there's a bunch of cameras, you might be able to say, oh, this car hit on these four or five cameras. So you have a general direction, a general location when that car has been, which is helpful. Um, we have internal and they, as part of the rules, internal, uh. Things to help prevent, um, misuse, but there's no. Physical. Prevention.
Yes, I'd like to see if, but this is going to come up across the country. What's flock have that has some certification that's done? Or that they're only using a license plate? I mean, Google and other folks have shown a propensity to not always do what they said they'd do with, with data. They essentially have the access data of your face. They have data on everybody for everybody who's passed through it.
So chief, I believe they only get the rear license plate. And then do they have access to our database that shows the owner of the vehicle? Or do they just get the license plate and give?
No. So what, what happens is, is, and that's how they, they, they promote their, their businesses that it only captures a back plate. So if a car is entered as being, let's say stolen. Um, all the, all the reads that we get from them is, uh, so the information that causes a hit is, is. Through NCIC. So it's updated three times a day, four times a day. So that's where it comes in to say, oh, this car is stolen. It gives a picture of the car. It doesn't run the plate. It just lists the license plate in the car and then we have to run it to figure out. What, what it is.
I agree with all that. My, my point's more concerning about if that's actually how the technology gets used. So everything you're doing, I agree with, and everything they're saying is happening, I'm fine with. I'm just not fine with. I'm just not fine with if there isn't somebody else that's involved in watching over how that actually gets used. Yeah, some kind of oversight because essentially they're in that video feed is much more data than that. Your face is in that feed.
Are they regulated by a federal or national organization, the FBI or?
Oh, not that I know of. I think any, any commercial camera system out there. Um, I, you you made a good point. Google, Google knows where you are better than.
That's correct. I know what you look like and all those things are.
I can only tell you the camera pictures that we see because it's it's geared from the rear.
Yeah.
Uh, you can never see who's in the car unless someone's in the back windshield staring back at you.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah, you that you can't see who's, you can never even see occupants in the car. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we do then have a recommendation uh that the uh the staff recommends that we approve the five-year subscription with flock safety cameras. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
Moved by Schmelzling.
Second.
Seconded by Vukovich. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Uh, next is an ordinance amending title thirteen, chapter one of the zoning code regarding a B one business and commercial district. And I believe this is Mr. Fellows, correct?
Be quick. Uh, so we have an applicant um who wants to put a restaurant in um. The center down by um the outpost. And so there's only a very small section of Glendale down there that's actually um. I guess in the city, um but in each direction in Milwaukee, you can have a restaurant. For some reason, back in two thousand, two thousand two, when the zoning code was rewritten, that particular B one. Quote M district did not allow for restaurants. So this would be a restaurant that would be um eat in as well as take out. It's not a drive-through. Um, uh, we've discussed it and it would be uh basically a very minor and um. Kind of text amendment. We would basically just use the same language we use in other B one quote, other kind of. Um, areas that allow for that kind of restaurant just to be added as one of the uses within that um. Uh, classification.
So would we be bringing it to the plan commission? They would not have a public hearing, the only. Because typically with these, we have a public hearing at the plan commission and then again at the common council and you're trying to streamline this only.
Yes, if you, if you wanted to streamline it, the way the code reads is you can um, the city council can um. How do I put this? Uh, so normally in a very simple process or longer process, planning commission would have a hearing. And city council good cava hearing. Uh, you, the city council can um defer your public hearing to the planning commission. So planning commission will have the only public hearing that would save um. A little bit of time because it wouldn't come back to you and then you would wait another thirty days to schedule it. So we could gain about thirty plus or minus days in the process. If you chose to um have your public hearing at the planning commission. As well as theirs. So just having the one.
So the question I have is though is in the memo, it says that December fifth, the Planning and Architecture Review Commission, the recommendation would be. They would recommend it back to the common council and they would not request the public hearing, but you're saying the ordinance actually flipped the other way around. So we'd send it to them, December fifth, they would have it, they would hold the January. What is that? The ninth, I think, when we're meeting? No, January ninth is when the plan commission will meet. We won't meet on the second because it's the day after the holiday. So it'd be the January ninth and then we'd get it back at our next meeting, which would be the twenty-second and we could approve it that night without a public hearing.
I saw it backwards, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. All right. So the the motion then would be to refer the zoning text amendment to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. And that the common council would be waiving the second public hearing that we would hold.
Yes, and I get and and to, and what I'm asking you to do is to actually ask us tonight to schedule your public hearing going forward. Because we can schedule now for January eighth, otherwise.
Commission?
Uh, no, for the city council. So what I'm, I was asking you guys to do is to. Uh, have the planning commission would waive their up, their hearing in December. But I'm asking you uh as council to direct staff to schedule that public hearing for January eighth. Because um if we wait until after planning commission and it comes back to you without that December twenty-fifth. Um, date, then we would be even farther out. So if you just, we can, instead of you coming back, well. And then telling us to schedule it, just ask us to, I'm asking you to schedule it.
Now I'm confused because you did just say to us that the hearing that could be waived is our hearing. We can defer our hearing and say the common council's public hearing would be the one of the plan commission. And if we defer, why are we tech directing you then to schedule another hearing for us?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's, I'm asking, so the idea here would be that. Uh, planning commission would defer theirs to your public hearing. So I reversed.
Do that by ordinance.
I believe so. Yes, I checked on it before I wrote all that. So and then what I'm asking you to do traditionally. You have waited till you have a response back from planning commission and then we schedule the hearing, which then adds more time. So just to make it a little bit smoother, um the ordinance doesn't really require all these steps. It's just sort of tradition. So you could recommend to us this evening to schedule that public hearing. Um, so the idea would be we'd have the meeting, baffles, schedule the public hearing for city council in January. Planning Commission Park will uh make a recommendation in December. That December recommendation will be presented to you in January, the same night we would have a hearing.
Okay, so what we need is a motion to to refer the zoning text amendment to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. And to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for our Janu- or for the first meeting of the common council in January. Assuming the recommendation from the Planning and Architecture Review Commission in December is to refer it back to us to approve.
Bracted is possible that they might want to have their own hearing in January, I suppose.
Can I get a motion then to that effect, please?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmelzling. And I just want to tell you all, when this first came up and he mentioned this to me, I said, how does our zoning not permit that? Because the outpost used to have a cafe in it where they made food on site and you could eat in the outpost. I know I ate there a number of times. I had a number of meetings there. So the outpost operated with a cafe with food prep on service, on site. For a number of years and apparently it's not permissible by our zoning. So somehow they got away with it.
But I would, what I would argue is if you look up the definition of supermarket, a supermarket is a place that sells dry goods as well as fresh produce. But also um may have a bank, may have a cafe, may have other things. So I guess you would probably put the the outpost in under a supermarket that has lots of other sub departments.
Okay.
I don't know if that's what was fought twenty years ago, but.
All right. Well, we do have a motion then to refer this zoning text amendment to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. And to direct staff to schedule a public hearing at our January eighth meeting, assuming the recommendation in December from the. P A R C is to approve. So can I get um, are we have the motion already? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fellows. Next item comes from the city clerk and ordinance amending section two point one point six pertaining to the appointment of election officials.
So um in order to be in compliance with the statutes and the Wisconsin Election Commission, um we had to revise the ordinance. So that we can allow our poll workers to work either a full day or a split shift. Um, they don't all work all day and it's a lot easier to recruit people um for a half day sometimes than it is for an all day. Right. So um our language was out of date. So obviously before next year. Um, we had to fix that and then also adjusting the number of poll workers that we have. The minimum requirements was incorrect as well. Sorry, I'm losing my voice.
Thank you. So we do now have a recommendation from the clerk uh that we approve this ordinance so that we're in full compliance with state statutes. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Moved by Schmelzling, seconded by Gelhard. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving? Say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. And. I believe that concludes all of our business. We now have commission committee, board and staff reports. And I'm gonna go to the clerk first who has some big news for us.
I don't like to talk about myself, so um I just found out today that I'm now a certified um Wisconsin municipal clerk, so.
Congratulations. If.
Um, there's a couple of personnel issues that we had. Uh, Lisa Rice, who's been our administrative services manager for. Uh, twenty-four years, announced her retirement. She's leaving at the end of January. She'll be slow, sorely missed. Um, uh, desk clerk Megan Price interviewed for her replacement and got selected for that. So we're looking forward to that. And then we have a police commission meeting uh tomorrow night and hopefully have a couple of candidates for police officer that will be approved by the police commission. So.
I know you had a meeting tomorrow night because I did not know to tell Nicole that, but I will reach out.
Okay, uh, yeah, yeah, it's at six thirty tomorrow. So if she wants to contact me too during the day and I can set stuff up.
Okay, thank you.
Um, unfortunately she has to get sworn in, so she's more than welcome to attend. I just don't know if she'd be able to vote on anything tomorrow night. Unless she gets sworn in tomorrow.
If she, I was going to say if she comes in during the day, then I could swear her in. So.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the city council or common council previously approved the demolition of two homes. One is a um blood plane buyout. Um, that home was on Sunny Point. It is scheduled for demolition this week. Uh, also purchased a property on Hubbard Street with a house and a very large garage. Um, the house is down, the garage will be down. Is it down yet, Charlie? I don't know. No. Uh, so it'll be down shortly. Um, the one other point on this is, is the house on Severs uh demolished yet or close to?
When the blew up?
Yeah.
Supposed to be close to happening, right?
All the permits were issued, so we're just waiting on demolition. Uh, the last thing I have is Dennis Fisher, Public Works employee, received a merit award from the city of Milwaukee. Last year, the common council um passed a proclamation recognizing him for saving somebody's life. He was plowing uh near Silver Spring. There was a lady who was essentially passed out in a parking garage in sub-zero weather. Uh, so he was also recognized by the city of Milwaukee for a merit award. So good for Dennis for that one.
Thank you. City attorney?
Uh, this morning.
There we go, there we go. Um, as you know, many of you know, we've had some code compliance issues and struggled with. Uh, some continuing issues on the property over in the fifty-seven hundred block of Dexter Avenue. Um, I appeared in circuit court this morning and was able to obtain a, an order um. For declaratory judgment and the judge is going to be signing an order allowing uh some work to be done there. And then the uh uh cost for that will be placed as a special assessment on the tax bill for the, for the property moving forward. And I can give you some more details if anybody wants to speak offline on that. Um, also that, you know, there's some additional things happening at the, in Madison relating to elections. And uh, you know, always monitoring the litigation associated with W E C. Uh, advisements. Uh, I think that one of the changes that's in um gonna be coming is with respect to absentee ballots, being able to count those. Um, earlier so that there's not a big um dump of of reporting at the end of the night. And then people all say, well, well, you know, there's something wrong with that because all of a sudden the number shifted. So it's hopefully gonna make the life easier for clerks and uh those that are are counting the absentee ballots. And especially since we've seen more and more of those in recent, recent uh elections as well. So lots of moving parts on that front and uh will only pick up its pace as we get closer to twenty twenty-four. And uh the big election in uh November of twenty-four.
Number one.
Well, the chief took my thunder, so I have nothing.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Number two.
Nothing to report tonight.
Number three.
Nothing this evening.
Four.
Nothing this evening.
Five.
Nothing for me.
Outside of my husband having his stitches out, nothing to report.
Okay. You're better?
For the most part.
Okay. Um, I just have a few things. Um, had an opportunity to sit down with some folks from Og Prep who purchased the Cardinal Stritch campus. I did just pass on some information to Alderman Gelhard since that's his district. Uh, they're still looking at a fall of twenty twenty-five. They have significant work they're gonna have to do. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance on the property. So um we should be expecting a a quite a bit of action, quite a bit of work in twenty twenty-four and early twenty twenty-five on that campus. Uh, they are planning a number of community meetings where they were going to be reaching out and inviting the neighbors from the neighborhood to come and talk with them. So that those folks will be aware of uh the uh changes that they have uh coming. Uh, the Glendale River Hills School District is engaged in a facility study. I posted that on Nextdoor as well as Facebook. Um, I will send the link to all of you. If you wanna, if you have email lists and want to send it out, they are trying to get a lot of community input. Um, on the things that need to happen at uh the three buildings that they own Parkway, uh Glen Hills and Good Hope. Uh, the seventy-fifth anniversary committee met a few weeks ago and I did just forward information out to a whole bunch of folks. I believe you were all on the distribution list. Um, the book is fully organized. And uh the editorial committee actually was just meeting. I saw them leave about five minutes ago. So they've been meeting on the same nights that we're here because the building's open. Um, but they've outlined the entire book and um a lot of the different parts of it now have been assigned. But they are still looking for particularly a lot of our business community, uh histories of some of our long, longstanding businesses. Um, so if any of you have folks in the business community that you know, uh, there are parts of the book that they do need, still need some help with. Particularly around the history of some of our long, uh, long-term businesses. Um, had a number of regular conversations with the rabbis. I did forward to you all comments that we've gotten back from all the different communities, very happy with the resolution that we passed um a few weeks back. And um they're also very grateful for our, and and I've heard this, every single one of them love our police department. And the help that they've gotten from the chief as well as Captain Fugman and the officers that have regularly patrolled, particularly on Friday nights and Saturday mornings. So thank you, chief, for the work that you're doing there. Um, they've all said over and over again, what a wonderful city Glendale is to, to live in. And they feel safe and secure here and able to worship here. So appreciate everyone's support for um for our Jewish community. And then lastly, the ICC met today. Uh, there are two things. One was an update on LandNav. Uh, apparently all the communities now in the county have navigated. Um, I'm gonna ask the clerk, have we had any concerns or major issues, many hiccups? Because it seemed like they said today that they've sort of addressed everybody's concerns. So I'm gonna ask if we've. Um, Ms. Ballwick, you want to come up to the microphone? So that was, that was one of the big things today is we summoned back the, the. We summoned back the county treasurer a year later because a year ago he was getting yelled at from a bunch of communities that had. That were in the first round. I think there were six or seven communities that moved to this new cloud-based system. And they all had problems last year with their tax bills. So I'm just curious, are we okay?
Um, we are currently having our valuation files uploaded in LandNav and this kind of going back and forth. It's in our assessor's hands right now at Accurate because we are getting some errors, but it's more with like the formatting. Within how the parcels are, I guess, listed versus where our previous software GCS would take some of those characters. And LandNav does not. So they don't like and symbols or if there's like a period somewhere. So those kind of things we're working with. So I'm hoping like those are only like the little bit of errors that we're dealing with. So it doesn't seem.
Technical issues.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like we're gonna have any big problems.
Right, Charlie, there's somebody outside the front door. I don't know if the door is locked, but can you, or you or John, can one of you go check and just see? I don't know. Thank you. Um, th- thank you though for that update. The county treasurer's office did stress today to all the mayors and village presidents. That their staff are available to answer questions and that LandNav has also been really responsive.
Yeah, I've been working really closely with LandNav and their support staff and they've been really helpful. I had two um Zoom meetings with people from the county and with uh LandNav when our support staff switched over. So where um Nicole, who was kind of working on things previously, and when she left, I immediately reached out like, where are we at? And I've been working really closely with them. So we have three training sessions coming up this week and next week. For the support staff to learn how to process the payments of property tax bills since they come in. So we're doing refresher trainings where they're gonna get more familiar with working through LandNav. And then next up, once all our evaluations are uploaded, me and Megan and Jalen, the finance manager. Are gonna be learning how to start um calculating out our tax bills and getting ready for printing and sending over to our printer. So we're on schedule, so I'm not too concerned about the errors right now. It doesn't seem like a major problem. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
I know this, the two-year process and last year, the first six communities that did it, it was nothing but problems. So.
It seems like our kickbacks are just little formatting things. It's nothing major. So.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then the last thing that we. And then the last thing that we went through today is we did unanimously pass a resolution that will be sent to the leadership of the legislature um, and encouraged all the communities to contact their representatives. Um, as you know, there was a court case in nineteen forty-eight that said that restrictive covenants around race or around religion are not allowed to exist in deeds. And so they've just been unenforced since then. You know, there used to be communities where, you know, black people couldn't buy in that community or Catholics couldn't buy in that community or only Catholics could live in that community. Jewish people couldn't live in certain communities and all of those were were ruled unconstitutional in nineteen forty-eight. Um, but those language, the language still exists. It just isn't enforceable. And so there's a bill before the legislature uh, that's been spearheaded by Wabatosa, uh, particularly their their representative, uh, Robin Vining um, introduced this and it's been moving forward. It is bipartisan. It has about forty different uh, cosponsors from both parties. But essentially what it says is if that language exists in your deed, you have the ability as a home, if this legislation passes, you'd have the ability as a homeowner to have it removed. Because right now it's just there and it's unenforceable, but it's just carryover language. Homes built a hundred years ago that had these deed restrictions, the language is still there. Um, so we approved that today. So that was the only major stuff at the ICC. And uh, I leave for National League of Cities early Thursday morning. So I'll be there Thursday, Friday and Saturday uh, representing us. I know Alderman Vukovich is gonna be there as well, so. That concludes my report. And we are noticed for a closed session uh, to meet with our attorney, our outside counsel on our case before the Public Service Commission against We Energies. Um, I don't believe it's anticipated that there will be any action taken by this council other than a motion to adjourn. So when we come out of closed session, so any of you who want to hang around until we come out of closed session, you're probably just gonna hear a motion to adjourn and adjourning the meeting. Uh, I don't believe there's anything that's gonna be before us for approving. It's basically just an update from our, our attorney. So can I get a motion for us to convene in closed session uh, pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Gelhard, seconded by Alderman Doherty. Uh, all those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Those know? We are now in closed session and we'll be meeting with um, attorney Art Harrington, who has been representing us. You may take a short break.
Earl Pearson came to every meeting. Right then, sir, and pick it.
The motion was made by Shaw and seconded by Doherty to reconvene an open session. Uh, it was unanimous. So we are now in open session. We had a meeting with our outside counsel to discuss our case against the Public Service Commission. Uh, it was merely to update us on the status of the case and where we are. Uh, we, there is no action to be taken. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Gelhard, seconded by Doherty. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Post? We stand adjourned at eight oh six P M.